If you would, we'll start the invocation and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. If you would bow your heads with me, please. We thank you, Lord, for the joys to come during this month of December. In our festivities, let us be mindful of those who have no festivity, those whose lives are affected by war, oppression, and exploitation, those who have been impacted with sickness, and those who are cold or simply lonely. Lord, give us a grateful heart and shared spirit. Now, if we work together on behalf of all who live in our wonderful town, may we gain strength and sustenance from one another through reason and compassion, and may joy and peace be among us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, council. Again, I remind you about the reading material in your packets. It contains a lot of good information on what our departments are doing and our employees are doing. And at this time, we'll move to item five for open forum and comments. And let me read this to you. Public comment. The council shall provide one, at least one period for public comment per month during a regular meeting, unless no regular meeting is held that month. Any individual or group who wishes to address the council shall inform the town clerk any time prior to the start of the meeting and provide their name, address, and subject matter about which they wish to speak. Persons must be present if they wish to address the council. Comments should be limited to five minutes per speaker. And I also ask that you put your mobile phone devices on mute, please, or on vibration. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to council? Last call. Seen none. Okay. Rick McPhord. You're up.
My name is Rick McPhord. I live at 408 Beale Avenue. And the reason, I appreciate everybody coming to hear me speak tonight.
Good crowd, good crowd.
I want a check too, don't I?
I just got a couple of questions I didn't get after the last time. And one of them was, I was looking for the salary for the person who does, who used to do the taxes. I was looking for that. Didn't get a call or a message on that. Also, a line in the budget that was for the new trish truck. Never got an answer on what we're going, if we're going to pick up trucks and we're getting trish bins again. And if that truck's already been bought. That was only two questions I had asked and didn't get an answer for. Appreciate you hearing me and with all the thanks.
We ain't getting the check. Okay, next step.
Don't sleep, please.
Sandy Walker. It's good to see you walking again.
See, you don't know how good it is to be walking.
Sandy, if you would, pull the mic down, please. Thank you.
You know, that's very good challenge.
Yeah, I know, I'm with you.
That's why you remind me. Thank you, child. My name is Sandy Walker, 124 Main Street West in downtown Valdez. And I here here tonight in Wauwahdian costume. As any of you that aren't familiar with the Wauwahdies, the ladies on special occasions, this is the outfit that we wore. And so this tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I consider a very special occasion. I come here tonight to welcome our new council members, as I've done over the years when we had new council members come on that were elected. And I bring them a devotional. For 25 years, I have prayed for this town. And as the Lord brings us godly people. And finally, the Lord said, well, what are you doing about it? And I said, well, Lord, I'm working, I'm going to work on that too. And one of my missions is to provide godly counsel and godly support, Christian support, for our people, for our leaders, and for the people in our town. And so tonight, I have the devotion for our new council members. And I would like to remind everyone that this town was started by godly people. They came from the Koshan Alps in 1893. And just down here at this, where the monuments are, they got off that train, didn't have a depot or anything, just placed where the road crossed. They got off, their luggage was unloaded, they fell to their knees and they prayed and they thanked God for bringing them safely to this new land, a land of opportunity, a land to serve Him. And this is the heritage that they've established for our people, for our town. This is what Valdez is about. Valdez is unique in that one thing, the ancestry and the heritage that we have of the Wauwahdies. We, that's the only, I mean, that is the major claim that we have. This is what makes us unique of any town in this whole state and just about the whole country. Valdez is the largest Wauwahdian population outside the Koshan Alps. And ladies and gentlemen, when you're making your decisions, consider that, remember that, use that as your guide. God had, God prospered these people when they came here. God, they served Him, they honored Him, and we were known at one time as the fastest-growing town in North Carolina simply because we honored God. Let's remember that heritage and let's go back to that. Thank you so much and God bless all of you richly.
Get your camera.
I'll come back.
Favorite person, Ms. Cole. She's hot. Good evening.
Good evening. Haven't seen you in this pool in a long time.
I know.
Steemery Cole, I live at 705 Berd Street in Valdez for the last 29 years. I just wanted to speak for a moment. I had been writing an article in the New Herald and it was referenced the water rates. Now, the rate, what brought the subject was the Kiantis. And I would say on top that Valdez is noted as we obey the law and we charge our water rates based on what it costs for a user to create them. But the same was that the county hasn't been doing that for years. And it doesn't look like from the comments, they have any intention of changing that. And I really just thought that possibly the towns should make a statement to the county that they expect that there should, there shouldn't be double tax for water because we're already paying up their share to each of our municipalities and then we're paying it to the people that use county water as well. So that was, you know, what I just to bring up was that maybe we can look at some type of a statement to the county that they should act on the fact that they want to know absolutely that they are not obeying the law. And that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item six is oath of office. And it will be administered by my dear friend, Mr. Paul Christeck. And the order that will go in is Mr. Harvey will be first for Ward One, then Mr. Ogilvy for Ward Four, and Mrs. Ward for Ward Five. And also during this process, if your family wants to come up and hold the Bible or just stand near you for pictures, that's one.
Okay, you want to put my right hand on the Bible?
Lift your little Bible, raise your right. Tell you what, let's do it this way. Let's face this way so everybody can see you. This is how it got you. Could place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. And then repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Glenn Harvey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Councilman Ward One.
The office of Councilman Ward One.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I, and state your name.
I, Gary.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Councilman Ward Four.
The office of Councilman Ward Four.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain the Constitution of the United States.
Support and maintain the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. I, and state your name, I, other word. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Councilwoman Ward Five.
The office of Councilwoman Ward Five.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain the Constitution of the United States.
Support and maintain the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Move the homes, new business to consent agenda. You can see there, there's three items listed. Is, are there any items anyone wishes to be removed from the consent agenda? Sorry.
I would like item C removed for consent agenda.
Okay. Item C will be removed and it'll be the first thing we talk about under item eight. Are there any others? Okay, I need a motion to approve items A and B under the consent agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items A and B under consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you'll have a second. You people don't be bashful. Thank you. Any further discussion? Not all in a paint-up. Vote on the consent agenda, items A and B. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, item eight, new business. And we'll discuss back up under consent agenda, item C, approval of special meeting and closed session minutes of November 20th, 2023.
I would move that we divide that question into the two sets of minutes, the minutes for the special meeting, and then separately take the minutes for the closed session.
Okay. Okay, council, I have a motion to divide item C. We'll divide it by approval of special meeting under one section and then closed session minutes of November 20th, 23 under another section. I need a motion to that effect, please.
I made the motion.
Okay, need a second.
Do you have a second?
Thank you. Any further discussions? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Okay. All right, under item eight, C. And the first section we talk about is approval of special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, could you repeat that, please?
Approval of special meeting under item C will be the first thing we discuss.
So, so Claire, that's going to be the approval of a special meeting minutes. It's what's currently before council.
And this is a special meeting that was held on between.
So we'll need a motion and a second. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of that special, special meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, those minutes addressed two action items, both of which had budgetary impact. And there's been a lot of speculation about the amounts. And I wonder if we could have, Mr. Mayor, if you could have either report to the council or have the finance director report those two amounts. I think that would have been some, some severance, maybe that was in, in paid to the.
Vacation.
And then the pruditation. Yes, those two numbers would be good to have, I think.
Do you want them later or, or the finance director?
Does somebody discuss an item?
Yes, is that you want to discuss an item?
No, I'm just, yeah, I'd like to have that information, probably have them on.
Okay. We'll get that to you tomorrow. Is that all right?
You want to defer a motion to tomorrow then?
No, you can do it now. Both, have you got that information?
I can't hear out there still. I apologize. We would like the totals on the payout, the action that was taken for November 20th. I know there was one for vacation. Got the other, I think, or something. And then the total fact for the salaries is that six months' severance, so.
Whatever it was.
Yeah.
It was the budget amendment that was approved in, in open session.
Yeah, the budget amendment that we did was for the prude vacation. And then we paid out the severance, our top of that.
Do you remember what those amounts are?
It was like $12,000 for the vacation and about $50,000 for the, for the six months.
Those numbers again, I'm sorry.
It was $12,000, $50,000, around $67,000 dollars.
Thank you. Okay, do you guys take care of item C?
We have a motion, I think so, I'm saying.
Okay, those in favor approving the minutes from the closed session on November 20th signify by saying yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe this is a motion to approve special meeting minutes, not closed session.
Special meeting minutes. I apologize. Special meeting minutes approval. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, correct. Those opposed, no. Hearing none, motion carries. Now we need to approve the minutes, correct? I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes for November 20th.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the closed session minutes for November 20th. Motion carries.
Second, please.
I'll say that.
Thank you. Those in favor signify. If there's any more discussion? Discussion, yeah.
The only comment I would make is that I was not at the meeting, so I would not feel like I should vote on the motion.
The attorney may want to talk about that.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, I would just like a roll call vote because I'd like to be on record as having voted no for, to approve minutes that a meeting I was not.
So, so I'm happy to speak on this rather quickly. There, there is no statutory basis for what happens in the circumstance where there's a closed meeting and new council members come on and whether or not they vote on that issue. There is an article that's been published by the School of Government on this issue. And the position the School of Government has taken on this issue is that new council members have a duty to vote. Okay, now, obviously, if you vote no, that is a vote. If you abstain, that is treated as a yes for you. But regardless, the position is that you all have a duty to vote on that regardless. Essentially, the position being all of you as council, council members are simply vehicles acting on behalf of the town. So really, the town is taking action. And so just because some members stepped out of the vehicle doesn't mean the vehicle stops. We still have others stepping in and they're under a duty to continue operating that vehicle, okay? So that's the guidance I would give you all on that before voting. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, plus one, that's for a roll call vote.
Okay. Okay, have a motion and have a second. We go roll call vote. Councilwoman Long.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harvey.
No.
Okay, Councilwoman O.
Yes.
Councilwoman M.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ward.
No.
Got that? And ladies, you'll have to look over me if I call you councilmen. That's my fault. But that might, will probably happen before we're done. Yeah, the motion carries. Thank you. I want to remind the audience, this is kind of a new ground for all of us, so it's a learning experience. Okay, item A, new business. Council organizational meeting. Most of this organizational meeting has been moved to a special meeting later this month. But what I need tonight, we need to nominate a mayor pro temp. So at this time, I'll open up the floor for those nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Paul Mears for mayor pro temp.
Okay. Do I have a second? More time. Do I have a second? Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilman Gary Ogilvy as mayor pro temp.
Okay, first motion go through without a second. I now have a motion for Gary Ogilvy.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Gary, no, those opposed, motion carries. What can I say? Okay, council. Next item B is our public safety projects review. And we have our architect Marty Beal here. Marty, will you come up? Marty is going to give us an update of where the project's at at this time. And then, once he finishes, council, if you have questions, I'm sure Marty will oblige you with an answer.
Can you be Mr. Mayor, council?
I have to pull the mic down a little bit. There's, there's.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to give you an update on our status. As of November 13th, we were given a notice to pause in the work which we are currently standing by, waiting to report to council. waiting to report to council this evening. Our current status is at approximately 9% completion of construction documents. Our drawing completion, if the council gives us continuation to proceed, we should be able to proceed again in mid-December and work throughout December, but due to holiday time off and due to required energy vacation, the staff and the work will be somewhat slower than, than normal. But drawings are anticipated based upon a notice to continue of being prepared for agency review by the end of January. Uh, some of those agencies being the USDA, North Carolina Department of Insurance, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Town of Valdez Zoney, and Burke County Building Inspection. Based upon any review comments that come back from these agencies, we will then need to modify the drawings and resubmit for various agency approvals. With that being said, that would allow us to possibly go to bid somewhere in the neighborhood of April and May. Getting an update on as to why the project has been delayed or slowly progressing. We have various numbers of consulting groups that we work with. Uh, and some of these groups have experienced uncommonly heavy workloads that we've had to deal with. I know in our office, we've had to deal with a labor shortage, just a, a majority of our production staff just due to life events have moved on. And the problem that we face is being able to replace our staff. It's been a lengthy search to find replacements, which has caused delay. And what we have found is we've had to replace with inexperienced staff. Uh, so continued delay, and then we've had to train our workers, which was a training curve, which added to the delay. To give you an update on our opinion of probable cost of construction, we anticipate approximately 9.2 million.
May I interrupt you just a second?
Just a minute.
Uh, going back up to the delay, I have been told there were some citizens who, who felt like we had already had the documents, the bid documents, and that we had actually went out to bid and we were sitting on the bids. That's the furthest thing from the truth. That's one of the reasons we wanted you here tonight to explain about the delay. And I appreciate you doing that.
Well, the, the delay is, is on our design team, not by intention. But the job has not been, construction documents have not been completed.
Correct.
And have not been submitted for bidding.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a confession?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was one of the people who would have a huge amount of money that the construction documents had been submitted and were sitting somewhere because I've built two commercial buildings, one about this size, one twice the size. From the time my board said go until we occupied it was less time than from March 7, 2022 until tonight. So I could not believe, I couldn't believe, well, I couldn't believe that if there was not an answer to why we didn't have construction documents.
I think you and I talked about this before, uh, I think Gary and Heather were involved. This project's been kicked down the road like a can. And, and I think what I told, told you guys, it's time to quit kicking the can and fix the problem.
And I would have to say, Marty, that how disappointed we are in, in the work that's been done, that, that this couldn't have taken place in a timely manner and that it couldn't be communicated to us if there were issues in a timely manner. This is, this is just not the way you do business. And, and I want you to know that.
I get it. The lack of communication during this process, um, I think has been, it, it's been very poor. We have been very disappointed. The citizens deserve to know what, and, and I think it's wonderful that we have a fresh, new look at this. We're all, you know, the names on the backs of the jerseys have changed here as far as the team members, but we're, we're all on the same team, and that's Team Valdez. Uh, and the citizens of Valdez deserve to know what the cost would be to, to build a new building so we can make a decision, at least we can have that baseline. But I, I'm excited about this new council because I think this is going to give us a, a new opportunity to take a fresh look at this, at this issue that, which Rex had and I inherited when we came on council. But this has been, um, somewhat debated over the last, what, four or five years? So, um, I, I'd like to know if we can get a commitment to finish the construction documents. When do you think they'll be completed?
We're anticipating the, uh, about the end of January to be completed, construction.
Okay. The, oh, sorry. I, I'd like to ask about a couple of numbers, if I may. The two, well, 9.2 million dollar construction estimate, you talking about the building or the total project cost?
It would be hard cost, not soft cost, which would be, does not include design fees, engineering fees, uh, geotechnical fees.
Right. Now, is that, is that 9.2 million? What was about 6.5 million in the USDA preliminary architectural review document? Is that the number we're talking about?
It, it could be, I'm sorry, I'm not.
No, because you, you submitted the preliminary architecture review document.
Yes.
That was a long time ago, too. That was in July of 2022. But, uh, in that document, I, I have it here probably, but in that document, you stated a construction cost that, uh, I did a division on it, was $260 a square foot. And, and then I think it was 5.6, 5.7 million or 6.5 million for just the construction. And that's what I'm asking, is this 9.2 million construction cost? Seven?
Yes.
Okay. So at that time, like in that preliminary architectural review, there was about, let's say it was push-up, six and a half million for construction cost. The total project cost at that point was 8.9. That was in your preliminary architecture review. That was the bottom line, but the total cost, 8.9. But now, we're talking about instead of, say, 6.5, we're talking about 9.2 plus another two and a half or three. Well, if we go to the total construction cost, so we're talking 10, 12 million dollars?
No, sir. Uh, the soft cost includes the architectural engineering fees, geotechnical services, which, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's, it would not run up to 12 million. Uh, you're running at 9.2, it may reach 10, total project cost.
And one, just one more question, I'll, I'll stop.
You're fine.
Somewhere along the line, you were paid, uh, $47,460 for construction documents. And it's, uh, the document that the finance director provided said that that was 35% of the construction document cost. What was the deliverable on that? At that, you know, roughly, when was that $47,000 paid and poured? What, was that just a bill or did you actually have some documents that were delivered to the town?
It, it was a progress billing.
And what was the progress?
The progress, uh, I'm, I'm not sure the figure, figures I have are currently, we have built out uh, through 40% construction documents.
Yeah, that's, that's the ones we have, right there.
Well, that would be a schematic design of 50,850, design development, 67,800, and total CD is 35,600, which we have billed 40% against that. Plus, there are some other supplemental services which include programming, uh, some assistance with USDA assistance, additional owner meeting, uh, electron, our site survey are all added within.
Yeah, that was a, that was a, that was a contract amendment, but, you know, those are numbers that have been paid. I was just trying to understand the construction cost.
Well, we're, the only thing I can add about the construction cost is we're living in an era of inflation now, and it is increasing. Uh, so that is part of the reason you're seeing an increase in number from previous to the 9.2.
So, Mr. Bill, we're, we're almost at the finish line with you, I mean, January is going to be pretty close to the finish line. The town has spent roughly 50% of the monies that we budgeted, $225,000. I, I would present that there is, there's great benefit in having construction documents on a, on a building. My feeling is that the town needs to proceed to finish this so that the citizens know what the final cost would be to build a state-of-the-art new building. Uh, in regards to what the council decides to do, there is, there's tremendous benefit in us having these construction documents and finishing this process. We spent good money on this. Um, I know that the town, maybe for the record, I believe in, and Bo can, can verify this, we have over 1.4 million dollars in ARPA monies already set aside. We've saved $1 million, an additional billion dollars in a project fund. We've been setting, setting aside $424,000 per year for this project, whatever happens, whether it be, you know, repair of the existing building or building a new building. Uh, matter of fact, the ABC store profits, most citizens probably don't know this, and I like this, all the profits coming from the ABC store are going into this project for the public safety building. I know state statute requires at, at least a certain percent of that go, but the town, town council decided, we're going up to 100% of ABC store profits into the public safety building project. So 25%, you know, 25% of the, of the project costs are being, being funded by the ABC store, which, which I kind of like. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted to state that for, for the record. And I think it would be, I think it would be, uh, very valuable for us to have these construction documents. Are they, can you, do you have an opinion on how long these, the shelf life on these construction, uh, documents last or?
Uh, well, I can tell.
Your opinion on how beneficial it would be to have those?
They will last, not knowing what future co-changes will be, but we're in a cycle that next year we'll have a new building in Cody, North Carolina. Uh, so that will last, last at least that long pending modifications.
And does it cost, do you have an opinion, does, does this include the cost of going to bid? Bo, maybe you have an opinion on that? You can, I know, there's probably no cost, there's probably little cost to take this to bid, right? So we actually know what our actual numbers are.
Do you want me to give a financial update on that?
What was that question?
Is there, is there a cost to, to take, to take this to bid? Once, once we have construction documents?
Col, just to make sure of the question, you mean, once we have the construction documents, are there costs to have bids come in?
Well, I think, I think this includes this budget, this amount of money that we budgeted. I think this includes the, the cost to take this to bid. There's, is there nominal cost for that?
It includes bidding.
Marty, do you have, do you have an opinion on?
We have bidding and negotiation within our fee structure of our contract, which is included. Uh, other than that, you'll have legal advertising. But that is basically the cost. You won't have any cost that will be incurred by the town from the bid market. That's all on the bids.
Okay. Counsel, you want, ready for him to proceed? His presentation. Oh, I do know, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the city even kept their drawings on the shelf for 10 years before they built. And I'm sure they had to make some modifications, okay?
Mr. Bill, I apologize for answering another question, but, uh, originally, when the town council approved going forward with at least getting construction documents on the public safety building project, one of the things that we felt that was very necessary is for us, for us to have, um, alternate bids or alternate proposals, uh, to maybe not have a stone facade, you know, changing the equipment bay doors, anything that we could do to reduce the cost, reducing the size of the building. And that, this, you would be including that, I guess, in the construction documents, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to verify.
And just to give you a, an update, here are some model renderings which will, you can pick some of these alternate bid prices. Uh, this is, uh, of course, an overall view, uh, of the site. Uh, this is a front elevation view of the base bid. The base bid includes glass sectional overhead doors for all the bays on the, the front and back side of the fire department. Uh, of course, roll-up doors and the police sound port. Uh, the materials are basically split-faced concrete block for the, the lighter color in the base with brick veneer above and decorative bands. Okay, it's a label. We're still using stone to resemble stone that's associated with different structures here in, in the town. And that's to be incorporated as part of the public entrance. This is the right side, you can see some of the public entrance beside the flagpoles where some of that stone would be included within the base bid. This is a view of, of alternate bid, which would include bifold stacking doors for the eight apparatus bay doors as well as stone within the base, which would encompass approximately three-quarters of the building to be along the front side, along the public side, that, that, which would be the east side. And just turn the corner on the west side. That would be the front showing the alternate bid with the stone and stacking doors. This is the alternate bid of the east side showing the public entrance with the stone on the bays. Any other questions that I can offer?
Sorry, I've got a lot of questions.
Okay.
Did you, I, I'm sorry, my memory, I can't remember if you, did you actually give an opinion on the existing public safety building? We, we had a public forum, I, yeah, we did, back, back, I think it was February. And you, you gave an opinion on what the cost would be, I guess, to, to remodel that building or, or try to renovate that building?
Yes, sir.
You remember what that, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Now, that, that's the building now?
Yeah.
That they're in, and you also gave a bid to remodel that one?
Yeah, well, yes, sir, we prepared an opinion of probably cost based upon, one, the repairs that would be necessary for the building, and two, renovation of what it would take to bring the building up to current standards.
Okay, you don't remember what that was?
I, I think it was four to five million dollars, I believe. Which, which again, whatever council decides to do, I just want to make sure that this information is before the public, because it's been a long time. It's hard for us as council members to remember this. But, you know, we're, we're faced with a decision, do we renovate the existing building? Which part of it is over 100 years old? There's lots of issues there, you've got mold issues, you've got asbestos that can be found. First, yeah, again, whatever the council decides, the council's going to decide, but more information we share with the public and, you know, the better, you know, better decision. We, they can communicate with members of council and we can come to a, come to a good decision on how this should be resolved. But something's going to have to be done.
And I think we've got to remember that if we do go that way, we have to find a place for the police, and we have to find a place for the fire, and we have to find a place for those fire trucks. And it has to be a permanent structure. So we've got to think all that through, too.
ADA issues, there's, you know, there's a lot of plus, plus the, the size of the building is going to serve the Town of Valdez going forward for the next, you know, 50 years.
Mr. Mayor, could we move on and, and, uh, let's talk it up when we have more information?
Yeah. Bo, I think the next up is the financial. Thank you, Marty, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. So we're going to dig in the numbers a little bit here, and this may answer a few of the questions I've heard. I'll get it pulled up here. All right. So what this has shown is just the architect contracts, CDSE, those are the new amendment packet. So I'm going to try to break this down a little bit so you can all understand it here. The contract itself is broken out in three areas, and so you can see my cursor here, it's got basic services, and within basic services is $339,000. The second part of the contract is supplemental services, totally $92,200. And the third part is reimbursed for expenses, $15,400. So those are the three parts of the architect contract. Sorry, what was going on? So with these three, it adds up to the $444,600 total sum of the contract. So the reason why I broke it out three ways here is the basic services, you'll see if you look across the percent bill, so that's been 100% billed to us, and we paid that out. And the procurement and bidding right here, that was a question, how much does the cost to go out and bid? If we're going to attach a number to that, that would be the $16,950, just the size up there. But if you look at the, all the greens, at the bottom, we have a $7,250 number here. That was amendment to the contract for some additional surveying, so that gets added to the original contract amount. So if you add that in, plus the original contract, broken down into those three sections, the total of those is $225,850, which is just about 50% of the contract. We've paid half of those architect contracts. So that's kind of where we're sitting on that. Before I go any further, any questions on that part of that? How about you put it out? And construction documents, we have, I know Marty said we paid 40%, but we actually only paid 35% of construction documents.
Bo, do we have any, anything right now, any construction? We don't have any partially completed documents, we don't have nothing to show as far as design other than what he's presented.
Right. We don't have a full set of construction documents, so he's done 100% bill. There's a progress bill, and guys are working on them, they've got staff time, so that's why they do this for that progress. Well, we don't have anything in hand at this time for that. As you can see, under construction documents, that third line down, so in the contract, that value is $135,000. We've only paid out $47,000 of it, so just a third of it, so probably. So the next step would be the bidding and continuing the process. Any other questions on this part? I know there's a lot of numbers to take into the, the key goal and remember is we paid 50%, 50% of this contract.
Council have questions?
So right now, we've paid $225,000-
Yes.
-total to the-
The CDSE.
Does council have any opinion, have you, council, have you reviewed the contract with Mr. Bill, and is there any, we don't, there's no penalties in the contract for, is it that we're post-essential?
Marty's-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. There's no more questions. We're going to go on to the next slide here. And I want to talk a little bit about cash we have on hand. So the important thing here is to remember this is Fund 35. Now, when you hear general fund balance, that's Fund 10. So this cash that we have on our hand is not part of our general fund savings. This is a separate bucket of money, okay? It's a capital project fund we set up for this specific project, and then we've been putting money into it to save for it. So I've got it broken down into two sections. First of all, let's jump down to the bottom. 1.47 million is how much cash we have in this project, okay? But if you look at the top, it gets a, we've got to break it down, because if you'll remember back, we had a $500,000 state appropriation that they gave to us. So that money has to be used either for the new facility or the existing facility. So if we don't use that money for either new or existing, we have to send that money back to the state. And that's why I broke that out, because even though we have 1.47 million cash in the project, that $386,000 that we have, now we've used some of the $500,000 to pay Marty. But if we don't use it, we'll have to send it back to the state. The other one, almost 1.1 million cash, that's to be used at council discretion. So it can be used on the project, or if the council decides they don't want to continue the project, or wants to go to the correction, we can ship that money out of that fund and put it into a different fund to be used elsewhere.
But the $500,000, we can, if we build a new building or remodel what we have, we're okay with that?
Yeah. And we've already spent about $113,000 of it, so just that 386,000, if we, say we just stopped hold today, I'd have to send that back to the state. So that would be cash going out of my pockets then.
Captain, mayor, what the file you're about, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The actual, you want to repeat that again, the brand? Yeah, about two years ago, the state of North Carolina broke away $500,000 in their budget for this project, and so they gave that to us upfront, and I record with reporting on that every quarter, how much we used, how much was left, and so forth.
I'll say 386,000, maybe.
Right. We've used some of the 500, so that's how much we have left of that 500.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to send the full 500 back if we used some of it, but what we haven't used, we'd have to send back if we don't use it. So I've been, ever since it was appropriated to us, I've been using that money to pay Marty's contract, so we can go ahead and get that out of the way and not use our actual corporate cash.
Since we're on this, I really don't want to prolong this discussion again. But, see, here's the problem we are, why this building not having been put under construction about a year ago, which is what I really expected, and I think we had some promises back in March of 2022, that by this fall, we have to be going out of bids, fall 2022. So since then, we're kind of paid into a couple unfortunate corners. One is interest rates have gone way up. Another is construction costs have gone way up. Another one is that $500,000 is at risk, at least what we have in the method of it, if we don't get it extended. So that's what, that's what this one year, twenty months since the architect was going to go, had one year since he should have had it on, in my mind, that's what this has cost the town already. Me, probably, I'm an inventor, just hit the light.
Let me throw this out, and I'll know this, the interest rate on the USDA loan is how much? 3.75. 3.75. We've secured that interest rate. But if we decide, if council decides to renovate, we won't be able to use the USDA loan for that. I didn't know if you guys were aware of that.
No, I doubt. If the bid comes in, as he said, higher than the amount that he put in after only architectural review document that we used to get that USDA loan, USDA is going to reconsider the loan. That was one of the conditions that you approved in March.
And the loan, I mean, they're not going to keep that interest rate, I'm sure, forever, and it probably has an expiration date on it.
Yeah, they have it set, but I know they are starting to lose a little patience, so.
Plus, back in February, when this fourth came up, February 2022, the interest rate we're looking at then was two and a quarter of the sum. Now it's 3.75. Not now, it's when this was locked in. And then who knows what it's going to be when we have to run another extension for a building that's going to cost nine million instead of six. It's just, the delay is costing you a lot.
At three.
I guess the way it stands now, though, we would have, Bo, we would have to finance how much if it was $9.2 million? If it actually came in at that cost, we would finance. At 3.75%, we would be financing seven million.
It depends on how much general fund balance you want to put towards it.
Right.
But with the cash we have here, just take off a million after that, if we get a special one down.
Okay. Counsel, anything else? Thank you, Bo.
Okay. If anybody has any questions about the project, actually, me, too, anytime, feel free to.
The next item is the agreement with Western P. Monk Council of Governments for HR Services for Town Manager Services. And this is something we need to talk about. You and I talked earlier today. What the initial plan is or was, and might still be, is we, the town, are going to utilize Western P. Monk Council of Governments to do the search for the town manager. And the way that works, they can recruit from the state of North Carolina, or they can recruit nationwide, whatever council decides they wanted to do. They get the applications in, whether it's 300, 100, whatever, and they go through based on what council has told them we'd like, and they eliminate the ones that does not meet that criteria. And then they give those applications, once they're narrowed down to council to look at, and schedule interviews. And then council can make a decision as far as which interviewee they would like to hire for a town manager. Is that a fair assumption, Lynn? That's my understanding. The recent, I think this is on the agenda for tonight, was to inform the public, the contract, I assume Mr. Terry will have to be discussed in closed session, or not?
Yeah, to the extent council has any question regarding the legal impacts of that contract.
Thank you. We are, council has interviewed three former town managers from different areas of the state to serve as an interim manager. And again, I'm passionate on, just so you guys know, we're looking at them serving possibly, and none of this is in stone, possibly serving six months from January to June to get us through the budget process. Counsel, y'all are on interviews, please add to it that if you want.
I would like to just comment, and there's a place later on in the agenda for council members to speak, so I'll wave that. Just, I'd like to say now how much, on behalf of Heather Ward, Gary Hogo, and myself, how much we appreciate being welcome and welcomed to the council by the mayor and by Council members, the Council of Women, we really appreciate that. And we have, as he just reported, over the last week or so, we have interviewed potential interim managers, and they, we were all involved in that, even though three of us knew that, you know, we were there by invitation, by their courtesy of including us. The interesting thing was, at the end of the third interview, we chatted for a little bit about where we were, and the essence of that, I think it's fair to say, each of us felt that any one of these three would be great, because each one was heavy experience or recently retired, so they've done, they've done it all and more, so we felt good about that. I will mention and refer to the comments from the last one we interviewed, when we were talking about how much time this is going to take, is it going to be a full-time job or part-time job? And basically, this candidate said, doesn't matter how long we agree, what kind of time schedule, what kind of hours, what kind of work schedule I should work, it's more than full-time job. And cited some examples, and we could have a fire, I don't know if he knew about how post-fires come to Valdez sometimes, and we got a fire sweeping down across the town. We could have tornadoes, we could have hurricanes. The town has about ninety or so pieces of rolling equipment that could roll over on somebody. There are things that could happen that would be disastrous, and they need to have somebody in charge. And one of the things in all the preparation that all of us have done, and what it's like to be on a council is, we learned that, there's only two things the council can do when it comes to personnel. One is to hire a manager, and that's a very important responsibility, and the council manager model of governance, which is part of the Valdez Town Council, Town Charter, that's spelt out what that position is. And then the other thing we can do is hire an attorney. Everybody else has a responsibility of a manager, along with such things as, we have call-in help for active shooter, or the national guard, or whatever. So the point is, we need to have somebody in charge until we get one of these interim managers hired. And with that, I would like to move, that we hire, that we engage an experienced manager as an interim manager, until we can hire one of these professional, recently retired managers. And we have a gentleman who's had extensive and broad experience in business, and he's well-known to the town, he's a well-known, well-intended heritage, and I have copies of the resume here, but I would move that we engage Edward B. Peru, Eddie Peru, as the interim manager until we can hire one and put him in place, and he's, he would be willing to serve in that capacity for up until early January, if it takes that long. We all hope it won't take quite that long to get an experienced town manager in place as an interim manager. But the negotiated contract cost is $1, so we don't need a budget amendment, we don't think if we should pass this amendment, so, pass this motion. So that's my motion, is that we hire, that we engage Edward Peru as the interim manager until we get an experienced professional manager in place, so we have somebody in charge. That's the motion. The position I had required international travel every time I left the country, I had to name an acting manager, have somebody in charge, my board knew who it was, my staff knew who it was. The town needs the same kind of council-approved authority to act in the absence of a manager. My motion.
Even though we have an assistant down there.
And one of you, council has responsibility to name and engage a manager. But I don't know if I've got a second. Do I get a second?
Before we proceed on that, just as a procedural matter, I think since that's not on the agenda, we first have to make a motion to modify the agenda to add that, and then we'll need a second, and a majority vote on that, and then we come back and you'll renew your motion at that time. Does that make sense? Because procedurally, it's not on the agenda, so it's not action before council yet, so we'll need a motion to modify the agenda to add this item, consideration of interim manager.
I'll wait for the motion.
Okay. Now we need a second.
Second. Second.
Discussion. I have, I have-
Does that, does that motion require discussion?
Our motion is resubstantiated.
I would just say that this wasn't something I was expecting tonight, so I would just, that would be my comment. I thought we were looking seriously at handling managers that were going to come in. You know, some of the people said they could be here by December 18th, so that was, that would be my statement.
Also, I think the previous, or the existing council have no idea about his, his references, his capabilities, his background.
I'm sorry, of the person I wish to nominate?
Yeah.
I think you all interviewed him, but here's a.
You didn't interview him.
Here's a resume for everybody included in town clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make a comment. I know the citizens might not be aware of this, maybe they are. We, we do have an assistant town, town manager right now, in Bo, in his cost, he's costing us nothing right now, other than his salary, so that's something the council needs to decide. I mean, Bo has a lot of experience, he can, he's, he's basically filling this void right now, until we find an interim manager. I know Eddie, he's a fine gentleman, he's got tremendous managerial experience. My, yeah, my point is, you know, we have a, we have an assistant town manager that's willing to fill that, that gap, until we find an interim, an interim manager.
In all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're talking about job titles of employees, that we're talking about the position of town manager, interim town manager. So I've already revealed the one that I would like to nominate, if we can put this on the agenda. I think if somebody wants to nominate a different one, we could move that as well, so. But I think the council has to take this responsibility.
My, Eddie, this is no reflection on you, okay? I know your, your background. My, my concern is the, the lack of governmental operation experience, municipal operations. That, that's my concern.
Excuse me, are we talking about the nominee I need, or we, I wish to make, or we talking about putting this item on the agenda?
Yeah. We might put on the agenda first. I have a motion. Did you say your, your second? Any further discussion? Okay, motion to add this item to the agenda. All in favor, signify as saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Okay, motion carries. Okay, and now.
I move that we engage Mr. Edward Peru as the interim manager, effective immediately, serving until a, an experienced, fully experienced in all aspects of town, county management, government unit management, can be hired as an interim manager, for the sum of $1, up until through, say through the next council meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, but I have a second. A second? Okay, further discussion?
Can, can this issue be, council, please give me, give us some advice. Can this be tabled until we have the opportunity to interview Mr. Peru?
Yeah. So, Council and Mirrors, you can make a motion to table, that's an incidental motion, that would take priority over the main motion, if you wanted to.
I would like to make a motion to, because I would like to have the opportunity to interview this candidate.
Okay, so for purposes of a motion to table, you typically want to make it to a definite period, if it's indefinite, then essentially it kills the primary motion. So you may want to schedule when you want to revisit this issue.
I'd like to make a motion to table this issue until we have the opportunity to interview this candidate, until.
Next meeting?
Or it could be the next regular meeting.
Or the, or the, or the next regular meeting.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, that's now your motion, so you'll ask for a second, and we see a motion.
Okay. I'll give a second for Mr. Mirrors' motion.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify as saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Okay. Okay, now, I'm sorry. Okay, two yeses, three nos, and motion fails. Okay, we'll get back to the first motion. Okay, any further discussion? On Mr. Hardest's motion?
Well, as a mover, I guess, I guess I should have the right to speak, and I'll just repeat, that council is responsible for having a town manager in place. And that is, I think we've all agreed, getting one hired promptly is the most important thing facing this council at this time. But nobody knows what can happen tomorrow. We need to have a manager in place tonight, tomorrow, and until we get one hired that we've all interviewed and that we think has broad experience. It's, as I said, when I left the country, in my organization, my board expected me to have somebody in charge. I always named someone in charge, the board knew who it was, my staff knew who it was, and if there's an employee killed tomorrow who's an active shooter next week, or is watching over us, and none of that's going to happen, but if it does, we need a manager to deal with it.
And I understand that, but my question would be, why was that not put on the agenda as something so that we had some, we knew that this was coming tonight, because I did not?
Just from a legal perspective, just so I understand, the motion is to hire, I'm sorry, I don't have the gentleman's name.
Edward Peru.
Okay. And I believe you stated the motion was for, you're going to hire him for a dollar, and that term of his retention would be until the next regular meeting? Is that how you cast the motions?
That would do it. For the second vote.
Second meeting on the 18th.
No, the next regular meeting will be June, July, when else we have a second? It'll be the first week of, in January.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. And again, let me state, I know Eddie, he's a fine man, he's a good man. He has a lot of experience. My only concern, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure that all the voices of our citizens are heard here. My only concern is that, you know, that the council, there's not some hidden, hidden agenda here whereby this approving someone that's connected to the community, that might be connected to the, to our, to the new council members, would, you know, would be, you know, that person would be directed to do something that wouldn't be to the benefit of the town. That, that's all I'm addressing. I'm just, I'm just making my concerns.
Can I call a question, please? I'll call a question.
I'm not saying that this person, I'm just saying.
Please, I'll call for a question, please.
I'm just saying that I'm trying to represent all the voices of the citizens, and having someone that's not connected to the, to the town, someone that, you know, has previous experience in town management, there's a benefit in, in having that person. That, that's all I'm saying.
All from both, those in favor signify as saying yes?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying, Troy, but Glenn's motion, he's to hire Mr. Peru, hire Mr. Peru for a dollar until the time, January council meeting, hire a, an interim town manager.
The motion's been made.
Yes. And now we're voting, and we'll be voting, all those in favor signify as saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. Close to the minute.
So we have two budget amendments to the council. So we will, so the budget number number five, that's ten. So this goes back to the previously mentioned item about the council governments doing manager search, so this covers the expense of the contract, you add $2,500. You want to put one in?
Yeah. Counsel, can we get a motion to approve this budget amendment, please?
I make a motion that we approve this amendment with the Western P. Monk Council of Governments.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have a vote on, on the second.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering about that, because we need to go into closed session to discuss that.
Yeah, so there was no motion made, and the way it's on the agenda, I wasn't sure if it's a no action item, if it was actually intended for a call for a vote. So, so I think we have now a, a motion on this budget amendment that we need to address, and then if we need to go back to that, someone could call that matter back.
How long will we come out of closed meeting, we can go back to that?
We can certainly handle it that way if you'd like.
I think.
Which, I'm sorry, which budget amendment are we talking about?
For the COGS, Assistant Local Manager.
For the COGS? Why do we need that? I'm just asking, why do we need that?
Yeah, so, so I do think it makes more sense to discuss the contract first, because only if the contract is approved, would you need to like.
Let's just get this settled.
I think since we have a pending motion, you'll have to call for a second, because likely you won't get one in motion.
Okay. Can I have a second on the approval of the first budget?
Or actually, Mr. Mayor, maybe the better way to handle that, so it doesn't die, is that someone can make a motion to table until the contract's considered.
Handle until contracts.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to table this contract until.
It, it'll be a motion to table the budget amendment ordinance until the contract is considered.
All right, let's make a motion to table the budget amendment ordinance until the contract is considered.
Okay, second, please. May I have a second, please?
With no second, that motion will die.
So what we need to do?
Well, so you'll return to the motion.
To approve the budget amendment.
And at that, at that time, if you have no second, now it will die.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for $3,500. Do I have a second?
So we're, I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
I'm confused, I'm sorry. So we're talking about the budget amendment with COGS, okay. So I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Okay, I got a motion, but a second.
Okay, I'd like the second there.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I don't understand why we're amending the budget to allocate money for something that doesn't exist, so.
What, what we're going to do is, I figure the motion won't carry, and that will eat the bones out. That's the way.
Good.
Okay, those in favor signify as saying yes?
Yes, to approve the budget there.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, those signifying by saying no, that do not want the budget amendment approved?
No. No.
Okay, motion fails, thank you. Now, we have to go into closed session to approve the contract, and then we can come out and approve the budget to pay for that contract.
Okay, so, so just for clarity, we were going to closed session to discuss the contract, and then we'll return to open session, and council at that time can take the contract up for consideration.
Correct. Okay. All right, the next budget amendments for unified development ordinance.
Budget number four, that's ten, unified development ordinance, or what we call UVO. So this contract was approved with council last budget year, recruiting planning, so we'll see. It was in the budget prior fiscal year, they didn't quite finish the project yet, so what happened with those funds, they rolled into the fund balance. So what we got to do now is pull them back out, put them back where they need to be, so we can pay, pay off this contract. So what was, the contract amount was forty, almost $46,000. What rolled back into the fund balance was 33,717. Then you pull, this is what this is doing, is pull it back out, so we can fulfill this contract. So that's what this budget amendment's doing. The money's already there, it's just accounting, we need to get it back, so we can leave it to the ordinance.
Questions, Counselor?
I didn't know what unified development ordinance was, and still not totally clear. Maybe Mr. Johnson can help us with that, and help the people of Valdez.
Oh, that's a question, and congratulations. UVO is, again, is abbreviated or acronym for Unified Development Ordinance. So we got two ordinances, governing, planning, zoning, development, and town boundaries. Those two ordinances are zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Council, last year, initiated the contract, got the request of the planning board and the planning director to update both ordinances, so to bring both ordinances up to date. In doing so, we went with a UVO, so they're going to be updated, the planning, the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations will be updated, and combined into one unified document. So therefore, that's, that's where you get unified development ordinance. So basically, at the end of the day, we're going to take the subdivision regulations, take the zoning ordinance, we're going to update them, and put them into one ordinance. That way it'll be easier access for the public to, to view those documents, something related to the subdivision, they don't have to try to find the subdivision regulation, everything within one ordinance. Contract, we have the gentleman that's initially, that's overseeing this project, he's the own staff with the School of Government, excellent reputation, he's done excellent job previously on some other planning and zoning related matters, feel confident in his ability to provide us with the best UVO that we, at this time, that's what a UVO is, Unified Development Ordinance, combining subdivision and zoning regulations into one document.
I'd be anxious to see that.
I would too. To be honest, we feel, it's pretty intense, it's really intense ordinance, because again, the Valdez subdivision regulations, and as well as the zoning ordinance, have not been updated in years. And so it's still now that we moved before, we started the process initially with general statutes of 160D requirements, that was across the state, with general standards indicated that all ordinances needed to be consistent, so we didn't get that started. But again, this move, this move will certainly bring us up to, up to date, and then we're not affected on the planning board, maybe making some recommendations that, you know, related to setbacks, or special uses, and things like that. But certainly, that's still, those are just recommendations, ultimately, you, the council will decide to, to accept that on, to, on, once it's. Any additional questions from council on, on the night? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, Counsel, do you have a budget amendment before you all entertain a motion to approve that budget amendment for the UVO?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment for the UVO.
Okay, second, please.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify as saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Counsel, our next item, E, and for the public, this be considered an announcement for a called special town council meeting, which will be held on December 18th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Again, that's December 18th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Most of these items have been placed on by, by our new council, and I'll ask them to address some of these. I think this ward, there were several units. I think, Ms. Ward, there were several you had that you'd like to talk about.
I know with the first one was the adoption of the twenty twenty-four town council meeting schedule. We would like to postpone approving the schedule until we have our December eighteenth meeting, so I guess I'm tabling that schedule, that, until the December eighteenth meeting. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, this is just kind of an informational thing for the public, when we have the meeting, then we'll take action on this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, will actually be a motion and a second.
To approve the meeting, I know, but to approve the special meeting, since it's being held at this council meeting.
What, what I like is, and I think Mr. Harvey was, had this idea, I think, is to kind of explain to the public what we're gonna be looking at, because that, what's on this, there won't be anything else we can discuss, except what's on the sheet.
That makes sense, I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you.
I would like to just add one item to the list at this time, and that would be a preliminary, preliminary audit report for twenty twenty-two.
That, we will try that, but it'll be based on auditors, you want from the auditors?
The auditors, I'm sure, I, I hope have...
In January, they're scheduled for January.
I'm, I'm sure they have submitted the audit to, to the treasurer by now, because they will do October thirty-first, they've always submitted a little time in the past. But I think because we're looking at some major financial things here, like a new building, architectural contract, hiring a manager, we need to get into, we need to understand the financial picture as quickly as possible, so I'm just asking that the auditors give us, give council a preliminary report of the audit at this meeting.
Like a preliminary, you like a draft, a draft of the audit?
I'm sorry?
Like a draft of the audit?
Whatever, or willing to share with us, you did it last December.
Yeah, so they, they do have one, and they submit to L C. as pending approval. I have that, and provide to the council. Okay?
We'll add that to the agenda.
And Mr. Mayor, now that I know where I'm at and what's happening, I understand now. I'll get the hang of it, I promise.
Hey, I'm still trying.
Hey, we'll, we'll get there together. The biggest thing for us, especially the newly elected, we wanna make sure that we are completely transparent with everyone. That has always been an issue for me in any level of government, I do not feel like people understand what is happening. There are a lot of people in my ward that things happen, they have no clue, and it doesn't mean that they have, they, you know, the previous councils have not tried, I know there have been some things that have gone out to try to explain to people, but there's still a whole section of our population who are clueless about what we do in Valdez. A lot of them don't come to these meetings. I, I like talking, so it's, it's a little easier for me sometimes to get up at the microphone and, and say how I feel, I try to communicate my feelings. A lot of the people in my ward will never walk down that aisle and speak in that microphone. So part of a special, the meetings will be, we would like to introduce a working meeting, much like our Board of Education does, where we have times where the public, not in a setting like this, this is too formal, I don't like being in front of you, I like talking to you one-on-one, because I wanna know how you really feel. All I see when I'm looking at you right now is either, or happy, so I, I want to get to know you one-on-one. And that's what these meetings will be, is a chance for people who normally won't come to these meetings, for you to share your true feelings on the agenda that will be put out that, you know, that next week, you can, or we're gonna, you know, we're hoping to get the agenda out a little bit earlier, we're looking at ways to do that, so you can say, okay, I have a week to look at this, and kind of formulate what I would like to say to the council. So that's part of our pledge to be more transparent, that's what we'll be talking about at the December eighteenth meeting, is how we can be more transparent with you, our town, that we represent, so.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is read the items that I, I have listed for that meeting. Item one, adoption of the twenty twenty-four town council meeting schedule. Item two, committee and board appointments, and then the discussion on new committees by the, for the council members. The town manager position, public safety building, amendment of town council rules and procedures, budget amendments if applicable, and then a closed session pursuant to North Tribe General Statute one forty-three, thirty-eighteen, A six, and then the preliminary audit report. And, and, counselor, I have a question, on the changing rules and procedures that takes four votes, is that correct?
I'll have to go back and look at it.
I, I think that I read it from the...
I'll make sure we understand that through the...
That's all that I have. If there's anything else you want added to that agenda. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to schedule for a called special meeting on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. for the twenty-two.
I shall move. I move.
Okay, so need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay. Mayor's report. This is something that's usually done by the manager, but I'll be making it tonight. Christmas in Valdez, the Hatley Memorial Tree Lighting, and Christmas Carol by Valdez Elementary School at the Old Rock School, with hot chocolate and Santa visits, will be held Thursday, December seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock at the Rock School. The rain date for this event will be December eighth. The Old Colony Players production of It's a Wonderful Life, show dates are December eighth and ninth, and fourteenth and sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Show starts at seven P M. December tenth, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Show starts at three P M. And you can find those schedules and purchase tickets on the Old Colony Players website at oldcolneyplayers.com. Mingle with Chris Kringle breakfast, Saturday, December ninth, twenty twenty-three, at the Old Rock School, hosted by the Valdez Fire Department and Community Affairs, and that starts at eight o'clock, Marissa. Is that right? Yeah, I think it's eight o'clock. Okay, special college council meeting, Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. Town offices will be closed December twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, in observance of Christmas holiday, and January first, twenty twenty-four, for the New Year's holiday. Okay? And now, mayor and council committees, council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, again, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to work with this new council, I welcome these new council members. I think it, I, I think it's gonna be good for us to, to have new individuals on council, taking a fresh look and perspect, taking a new perspective on some of these serious issues that we've been debating for a while, so again, I'd just like to welcome these new council members, look forward to, look forward to working with them.
Anybody else? Okay.
Again, thank, thank you all for including us up until tonight, and tonight, thank all of you out there for electing us and putting us up here, and time will tell whether I thank you for this year.
My thoughts are, my best friends are the ones who voted against me. Anybody else, counsel? Real quick, I'll give you a brief report on the police chief search. That position right now currently is open until filled. We have five, six, seven, eight applications from various areas, and that will probably be done when the new interim town manager's hired from the ones we interviewed the past couple of days. And like they said, we hope to have him onboard by January first. The, the way this, this is done in the past is the police chief, and Jack Ward can probably answer questions if you have any, is we narrow down the applications, they go before a review board made up of their peers, and by peers, I'm talking about police chiefs from around the area, sheriffs, maybe a person from training in standards, the North Carolina State Training and Standards, and then they narrow it down to one or two, or who they highly recommend, and then the manager at that point will make a decision on hiring, is the way that works. On the latter note, David Anderson is here. I noticed that we have two of our recreational league football teams who won the championship in their age group, and we hope to have them here in January. I think that's great, we got two teams that won championships. At this time, council, I entertain a motion going to a closed session, and, here he is. Closed session under North Tribe General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A three, consult with an attorney retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the town attorney and the town council, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there'll be no action taken in the closed session, and when we come back out, we will go from there.